Here we go. Shoshana?
Yes?
Okay. All right, we got you. I'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Monday, December 23rd, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Lovering, and Alderman Ben Clemens will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the benediment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask the clerk to take the roll, Alderwoman Shoshana Kelly is participating by telephone, and under the terms of the state law that allows her to do that, she needs to explain why she can't attend, if she can hear us, and who she is with, if anyone. Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, I am out of town. I am by myself, and I can hear you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Gidge.
Present.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderwoman Melizigolia.
President.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have 15 in attendance.
Also in attendance this evening is Mayor James Donches and Corporation Council Steve Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. Well, first, I wanted to get two days short of Christmas, and we passed Hanukkah, so I wanted to wish everyone, all the members of the Board of Aldermen and their families, all of our citizens, a happy holiday season. City Hall will, of course, be closed on Wednesday. We'll be open the remainder of the week, but, again, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season. And I wanted to thank Alderman Tom Lopez today for holding the vigil for the homeless, which he has done a number of years now. A group of people gathered out in front of City Hall, including some of you, to recognize the struggle that those who are unfortunate in our community are going through, and letting them know that people are thinking about them and that we're working on trying to make their lives better. We've got a number of things on the agenda tonight, Madam President, and so I will try to be brief, and I will address my remarks to a couple of the things on the agenda that I have reservations about, which I've expressed in the past to the Budget Committee, and which, for the reasons I will explain, I don't think should be approved. And those are two contracts that the Police Department has proposed that you approve. The first is one having to do with civilian employees, lawyers, IT people, and others. The other is the supervisors, the uniform supervisors. Now, I view the mayor's job as one which involves looking at the fiscal health of the city and trying to propose measures and make recommendations to you, the Board of Aldermen, who make ultimate financial decisions, to understand the budget, understand the numbers, look at the future, project where I think the budget and the finances of the city are going, and propose to you measures and steps which I think are in the best interest of everyone, including our employees, who work very hard, and our taxpayers, who also work very hard and have to pay the bills. I think our job is to look at all of the city's needs and take the big picture. Now, a subject that we've discussed a number of times in the past are the healthcare costs for city employees. Those costs this year are budgeted to go up 11% from last year. That is a $3 million increase, and the projections suggest that next year, next fiscal year, healthcare costs will go up another 8.6%. Now, when you put those two, the 11% this year, the 8.6% next year together, that is roughly a 20% increase in healthcare costs. For a city employee making $60,000 with a family plan, that is about a 10% increase in compensation, because a family plan costs about $2,500 this year. So, over a two-year period, you would see about a $5,000 increase, hence nearly, for a $60,000 employee, I guess that is an 8% increase in compensation over two years. For a $50,000 employee, a 10%. Now, this is a cost item that we've discussed quite a bit. We discussed it in great detail at the time of the budget last spring. We had Ms. Kleiner and the consultant for the city do a lengthy presentation to the Budget Committee in October with a whole series of slides discussing all of the ins and outs of the healthcare problem and making recommendations, all of which we are following in order to try to control costs. But the problem with a $6 million increase in a single line item is that it puts a lot of pressure not only on services but on taxes. So, $6 million equates to a 3% increase in the tax rate, that one-line item. So, we will struggle. We did struggle last year, and we will struggle, when I say last year, in our current budget, and we'll struggle next year in terms of trying to meet that one additional cost, plus all of the other costs that go up and pay employees and meet all of the city's needs. So, I've said that I don't think, under these circumstances, while we are still in the midst of these rapidly rising costs, that we should approve labor contracts for our employees regardless of how good they are. I mean, they're good, they work hard, but everybody in Nashville works hard, including those who pay the bills. And I've said that I don't think we should approve contracts which include raises above the cost of living, which is 2%, 2% a year. Now, I was approached, just in the last couple of days, by someone who said, "You're kidding me. When compensation is, the city's costs are going up as much as they are, 8%, 10% over two years, based on wages, you know, for the healthcare, you're willing to pay the cost of living? I think you should try to cut the, you know, tell our hard-working employees that we've just given them an 8% or 10% raise and try to save off the cost of living." Well, in my judgment, we want to be fair to our employees, we want to make sure that they don't lose against the cost of living, but while we're faced with this kind of cost increase, I don't think it is unreasonable to say that should be what we'd agree to. Now, the trouble with the two contracts, first, the civilian contract, it does two things. It increases wages about 11 and some, 11 and a percentage, 11 and a quarter, 11 and a half, over four years, with a whole series of 3% raises. And, something that we've discussed in great detail before, which I won't get into too much now, but it still does expand the sick leave buyout. For the first time, people will be, if they resign but don't retire, for the first time, they'll get paid sick time, as long as they have a certain amount of years with the city. The other contract raises wages, again, well, 3% a year for four years, or 12% or 11 and a half. Now, the problem with raises, which go up more than the cost of living year after year after year, if we had new revenue coming in, which we don't really, or if we at least had a stable healthcare system, maybe we could afford that, but to approve these contracts like, that have 3% over the cost of living year after year, long-term contracts, we build, we create a situation for ourselves where the budgets for these departments are not sustainable. The only way we will be able to maintain the budgets with the healthcare costs going up as much as they are and with wages going up more than the cost of living at the same time, the only way you can sustain that is to either increase taxes or reduce services or both. And I don't think we want to create an unsustainable situation for the city, its employees, the people who rely on services, and the taxpayers. So, I have suggested that the budget, the raises be limited to the cost of living. Short-term contract, we could do, there's a lot of different things we could do, but that's what I recommend we do in terms of the fiscal health of the city. You know, the Police Department, of course, feels strongly that these raises should be granted. I'm looking for them to be a partner, I mean, to do more than just advocate for the Police Department and to get as much as they can, but to be a partner in kind of helping to move the city forward, and I hope they will reconsider their position on all of this. In any event, I've already spoken on this longer than I intended to. It is the holiday season, so I will cease with these, my comments on this, but again, I will return to the beginning. I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season, that regardless of your position on this, and I know many of you disagree with me, but regardless of your position on this, I hope that we can, we will have good holidays, and I look forward to our next two years together. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of the mayor? I'll start on this side. Recognition period. There is none. Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of December 10th and December 16th accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication received from David G. Fedett, treasurer, tax collector, regarding bond sale plan and debt service analysis for general fund.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have six people who have signed up to speak, so our comment period is 15 minutes. If you could limit your remarks to 10 and 1/2 minutes, it'll give everybody time to speak. The first speaker is Tracy Papas. Do you give your name and address for the record, please?
Tracy Papas. Tracy Papas, 12th Street Terrace in Nashua. Regarding the $10 million bond for the Public Works Facility. I'm a better writer than I am a public speaker. So, for board members who didn't see it, I wrote an editorial which was published in the paper today, and that gave more of the dollars and cents kind of breakdown. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through each facility to explain the health issues, because I'm not the person who went to the press and explained all the health issues in our facilities, and I certainly think those need to be dealt with. But the problem is that this bond doesn't go near touching those, health issues for our employees, and I'm extremely concerned about the message we're sending to our employees. For our ASME who are in Parks and Rec and the Street Department, we're telling them, "Your facilities are in such horrific condition that we're going to take all your support staff and we're going to put them in a centralized location, and you're going to stay there in those facilities," that actually one commissioner who did vote for this had said squalor-like, and I don't disagree with that description. And I'm extremely concerned about the safety issues, particularly in the Street Department, for particularly our mechanics. So, my best way to go through this is to, I'm going to hit each facility, and I guess my main beef with this is that our homework was not done and we didn't get the figures. So, I'm going to start with Engineering Department. It's always had HVAC issues, mold issues. That was going to take some money. For transit, that's worked out quite well, they've actually fixed that. And a lot of my objection is, we never got a quote on what it would cost, even, you know, short-term, to fix that HVAC, and to get rid of the breathing issues, and I'm very sensitive to that. And my understanding is, the plan is, the Police Department is going to take that facility over. The Police Department is absolutely terrific at keeping up their facilities, so we're going to have to, by hook or by crook, if we're keeping that building, we're going to have to fix the health hazards in that building.
Mr. Papas, if you're going to go through the whole list, we're not going to have time for the other speakers to have their turn to speak.
I was told, I was told by an individual from the, I know $10 million may not seem like a lot to you, but I think it is to other people. When I suggested that we get an expert to at least find out an estimate for the costs of that system, I was told, I said, "We need to get an expert." I was actually blasted and told that a former Alderman who was an expert had looked at that. Now, that person is extremely handy at fixing and installing systems, but they don't design mechanical systems. I think you need a mechanical engineer. Street Department, no expert to fix the mold problems. In our garage, we don't have a lift, we have what's called pits. If someone falls into one of those pits, there's no way to get them out. So, I'll be real fast. Parks and Rec, no estimate to add to bathrooms, there's only one bathroom in there. So, at the end of the day, when we've had this problem probably since the, at least at the Street Department, since the first time the mayor was mayor, to try to ram this thing through for the $10 million, December 23rd, I think, is wrong, and I think it's a disrespect to the Parks and Rec Department, to the Street Department, and I think it's a disrespect for the people who live near the landfill, who are going to have to put up with all those trucks there. Full disclosure, I'm a neighbor of the Parks and Rec Department, so if I were looking out for myself, I could keep my big mouth shut, stay home December 23rd, and say, "Well, you know, I tried, I voted against this." This is not enough money to even begin to go near things, and I will tell you, I am big into safety, and the day that that young man fell down that drain, that really changed the way I looked at our system and safety. And I don't feel comfortable with the way we've left the Street Department. Thank you.
Mike Carrigan?
Thank you, I'll be brief. My name is Michael Carrigan, C-A-R-I-G-N-A-N, representing the Nashville Police Department. I'm here tonight to support both contracts in front of you regarding the Police Department, but I'm only going to limit my conversations to the UFPO. Approximately a year and a half ago, we began the negotiations. Approximately a year and a half ago, we began the negotiations for this contract. At the time, I was trying to be a good partner with the city and stay within the spending cap limits that the mayor had desired us to stay underneath. I worked real hard to do so, getting creative with some of the benefits that we offered people. Two of my unions got those benefits. When it came to the last union without it regarding the sick time, we were not allowed to go through with it for several reasons. I was asked to go back, renegotiate a little bit, and try to come up with a compromise. I did that. When I came back, I was again told that it was not enough, and we needed to get away from the sick time, and that I should look to give pay increases instead to the people. That was recommendations from several Aldermen, as well as partially by the mayor as well. I did that. I renegotiated with the contracts, with correction with the union. We came back and said, "Okay, we have pay increases, we got rid of most of the sick time." While the mayor is correct, and the sick time benefit is not completely erased, it now includes resignation, not just retirement, that is, after 15 years of service, while other unions in the city have 10 years of service, and it currently reflects one person. So, I tried very hard to come up with wage increases at your request to get this contract passed. The supervisors who, whose people that they supervise have less benefits than they do, we're not, we're willing to give that up. They've worked with me every step of the way. We came back with the wage increases. We were told that the contract was too long. As a result, last-minute decision last week, we agreed to take the fifth year off the table at the full cooperation of the UFPO to make it a four-year contract. That four-year contract, one year has completely gone by, that's the 2.25 wage increase. We are already halfway into the first 3% wage increase, so we're looking realistically, and that's within our budget this year, we're looking realistically at the next two years of 3% raises for this union, who gave up a pretty hefty sick buyout benefit. So, I'm asking for your support. The Budget Review voted unanimously to support it. I would hope that I would get that same support from every member. I am here, I'm available to answer any questions if you ask. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carl Seidel, S-E-I-D-E-L, and 39 Vilgub Circle.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm glad that the mayor asks questions about the financial part, because that's what I'm here for, asking questions about the bonding and the school and the other elements of the school. I regret I was out of town when the committee had its meeting, but questions that I haven't heard answers to are the breakdown in the elements of each of the projects, the projected student population by grade, as I understand they're building for expansion, when everybody sees that the student population is declining, a history, a future projection of our bonding debt, and the list of the potential projects you have. You have a lot of things on your plate, and $180 million is a lot, and it's going to mean a lot in the taxes, and a rough proposal for maybe a much-reduced type of school, instead of 80-plus million dollars, something in the 50- to 60-million-dollar range. And that's what I hope you consider and respond to that. Thank you.
Ken Doofour, 52 Corner Road, I'll try to make it quick. Bonding. I think it's irresponsible to bond, vote to bond all this without knowing how much it's going to cost the taxpayer. I mean, the mayor started the evening talking about fiscal responsibility, and you can't tell me how much it's going to cost in my taxes if all this bonding passes. I'll move on to the school site. I was, and I speak as a taxpayer and as someone who's on the school board for 18 years. I dealt with that plan when it came before us. First of all, it's around a 20-acre parcel, if I recall, and it was never meant to be anything but an elementary school. That's how it was pitched to us. And there's a big difference in usage between an elementary school and a junior high, in traffic, and I haven't seen that issue addressed whatsoever. Are there going to be enough, there are wetlands on that, on that bigger parcel, is there enough on that land, usable land on that site to get the parking, the building, and all the athletic facilities that you seek? I haven't heard those answers anywhere. Have there been any traffic studies done? I mean, I live on Corner Road. Back up for a second. I would wish the city did not spend another penny on Elm Street. I was on capital improvements for many, many years, and it was tearful to spend millions of dollars on a building that I knew I'd be standing here tonight talking about, because the building is obsolete, and it has been for a long time. But to go back, traffic studies, how about the roads? How about the sidewalks? It's my understanding that if you live within a mile of the school, busing is not allowed or is not provided. That area of the city does not have adequate roads, nor does it have adequate sidewalks. And, as I recall, and I read this a little bit in the paper, there's no direct access other than off, I believe it's Medallion Circle. You can't possibly bring all of that traffic through that subdivision. It'll have to be off Buck Metal. And it's my understanding that you don't even have access to that yet. So, to go back to the mayor's entree this evening about fiscal responsibility, tonight you're being asked to approve over $100 million of bonding, mostly for the school, and you're unable to tell me how much it will impact my tax rate, how much it will cost for road and sidewalk improvements, how the traffic will affect the greater neighborhood, that whole 03062, or a whole lot of it, and how will you access the schools? You're not able to tell me any of that yet, but like Commissioner Papas says this morning, or this evening, there's been no homework done on that, but you're ready to approve it. And that's, you know, as a taxpayer, as a taxpayer, that's repulsive. As someone who's been, was on the planning board for 18 years, it's not even imaginable that you would move forward without having the most of those answers. I mean, everything's a moving target, but to not have those answers is just irresponsible. So, you know, two days before Christmas, I mean, it just doesn't even look right. There's no one here, and I know that it's two days before Christmas. You know, there's no reason why you can't get the answers and then hold adequate public meeting or more discussion and provide us with some of these questions, the answers to some of these questions, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Testaverde?
Thank you. My name is Jim Testaverde. I'm Deputy Chief of Police with the Nashville Police Department. I'm here in support of both contracts for the UFPO and the Nashville Police Supervisors Association, but I'll keep my comments specifically to the Supervisors Association, and I will be here throughout the duration if anyone has any questions. The mayor spoke very eloquently about working together as a city, and the Police Department, like many agencies around the city, have gotten together in a collective bargaining strategy committee, and we are working together to try to do what's best for our people and the city as a whole. But we just learned about this monetary issue with healthcare very recently, and we're having trouble believing that this is a new phenomenon that the city just learned about. And if they've known about it for a while, it wasn't communicated properly. This particular contract with the supervisors was negotiated in its entirety before we ever heard anything from the city about the issue with the healthcare. In addition, I've heard the mayor many times speak publicly about the men and women, the first-line supervisors that are out there in the wee hours of the morning in uniform, you know, protecting all of us with police and fire. This contract is who that represents. These are the sergeants and the lieutenants, these are the first-line supervisors, which is the most vital and integral level in any law enforcement entity in the nation. If you ask any police department, they'll tell you the first-line supervisors are the most vital to the success of any agency. These are the men and women that are out there. These are the men and women that when we're all going to be home, myself included, God willing, on Christmas Day, they're going to be out on the streets. We are down, I said at the Budget Review hearing, 17 going on 18. When I say going on 18, it's because one of our people's background investigation is almost done. We swore in three new officers a week ago. They are no good to us for six- They are no good to us for six to nine months on average. So, I still hold that we are down 17 to 18 officers. That's about 20% of our patrol force right now. The mayor talked about the, what he, I know he doesn't want to do, of cutting services, 20% reduction in our patrol force, and we're not cutting services whatsoever. We do, we don't just think of the police department. I'm looking around this room. We've never disregarded a phone call, an email from anyone here, a meeting, a committee, opioid crisis, homelessness, mental health, suicide, children, schools, any issue that comes up from this circle or from anyone standing behind me out in the community, we're there for it. So, we are working. We're not just thinking about ourselves. But when we're losing people, what is being told to me, and I agree with this, in over 21 years serving this city, the one thing that's remained consistent, it's never a good contract year for city employees. It's never a good contract year. We have bad economies. We have pension issues up at the state. Now, we have healthcare issues. And once again, it's not, it's not a good time. But we're hemorrhaging good men and women. And we have to compete with Massachusetts, because we're on the border with Massachusetts, and more than half of our agency is from Massachusetts, myself included. And we came up here for a better way of life, and a better community, and a better way to do law enforcement, but we're losing our people. Again, I said I would be here, and I just want to end, and I'm sure you all saw it, because the mayor tweeted a few weeks ago, and I was very proud that we are once again in the top 10 safest communities in the country. And I'm not here saying that's all because of the police department, but I would like to think that we play a very, some meager role in all of that, and I'd like that to continue very much. So, regardless of how the vote goes tonight, I wish you from the bottom of my heart a very healthy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. The bond for the school is important.
Could we get your name and address?
Oh, Lou Juris, yes, 56 Haynes. I'm getting ahead of myself here, which is kind of rare. But I think it's important to go forward with the school project. As we know, Elm Street's been an issue for a long time. You know, it'd be good to maybe understand what, how it might impact our tax bill, but at the same time, I wonder what the existing facility is impacting us right now. You know, beyond the wear and tear of the building, the health of the building, and it's our most precious students, if you will, and the educators. It's important to move on with the project and maybe put the existing site to some use for affordable housing, or workforce housing, or emergency shelter. It's curious to hear the, it's a good education for me to hear the contracts tonight. For the cops, there's a lot of back and forth. I'm sure this has been a long process, and it's probably important to take a serious vote on that tonight, and the frontline people are very important. And there is a lot of competition for, to get police, to get qualified cops, to have them not leave, like the deputy chief just said. May want to look into maybe, with the healthcare costs going up, you can always try to maybe open existing contracts to try to talk about maybe some increases, if possible, to employees a little bit to help with those costs. They are going around, it's a nationwide thing. And just a few thoughts on that. So, again, school being important, I think it's vital, and it's been a long time coming, and there's been a lot of hard work at the school board on that matter over the past year, or a couple of years. Good evening, and thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communications been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding contract extension of Essex Power Services, Inc., Jackson Mills, and Mind Falls Operations and Maintenance Agreement.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make an motion to accept, place on file, and authorize the extension of the contract for the Jackson Mills and Mind Falls Operations and Maintenance with Essex Power Services in the amount of $404,605 plus revenue sharing. And Madam President, may we have this by roll call?
Motion is to set place on file and authorize the extension of contract for the Jackson Mills Mind Falls Operation and Maintenance with Essex Power Services in the amount of $404,605 plus revenue sharing. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
Just, could we, could we just have the, an explanation of what this, what this is all about?
Mayor, do you care to discuss that?
Yes, Madam President. The dams are managed by Essex Power, which we, which they run the day-to-day operation. So, we, we own the dams, we get income from the sale of power, and, but the dams still have to be operated, and we contract with Essex Power to do that, and this is a, this is a contract extension. Excuse me, I've got a little bit of a frog in my throat, but this is a contract extension of our current contract with Essex Power. Thank you.
Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malizigoya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 A's, zero N's.
That motion carries. Petitions.
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
There are none.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the December 9, 2019 Human Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 9 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 12, 2019 Substandard Living Condition Special Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 16, 2019 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 18, 2019 Finance Committee accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Auditorium Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the appointment of Paul Laflamme, 28 Lutheran Drive, Nashua, to the Auditorium Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2021. Is Mr. Laflamme here this evening? He will be sworn in at a later date.
Board of Registars.
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Adriana Lopera, 137 Chestnut Street, Apartment 2, Nashua, to the Board of Registars with a term to expire December 31, 2021. Is Mr. Lopera here? Come forward for the oath of, Ms. Lopera, my apologies, for the oath of office.
Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Board of Registars of the City of Nashville according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Joshua T. Hauser, 9 Cobble Hill Road, Nashua, to the Conservation Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2020. Is Joshua Hauser here in the audience this evening? He will be sworn in at a later date.
Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointments of the following individuals to the Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees. Tammy Crisp, 12 Mountain Laurel's Drive, Apartment 1, Nashua, with a term to expire December 31, 2020. Rosalie McQuade, 17 Reservoir Street, Nashua, with a term to expire December 31, 2021. Charles Matthews of 17 Shelburne Road, Nashua, with a term to expire December 31, 2023. And Stacy Baxter of 38 Berkeley Street, Nashua, with a term to expire December 31, 2024. Are any of those individuals here this evening? They will be sworn in at a later date.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointments of the following individuals to the zoning board. John Paul Bosher, 8 Fox Meadow Road, Nashua. Mary Ellen McKay, 9 Webster Street, Nashua. And Rob Shaw, 14 Sweet Williams Circle, Nashua, with terms to expire September 11, 2021. Estacia Boras, 44 Balcom Street, Nashua, with a term to expire October 1, 2021. Jonathan Courier, 6 New Searls Road, Nashua, with a term to expire September 11, 2022. And Steve Lionel, 19 Cabot Drive, Nashua, with a term to expire September 30, 2022. Any of the zoning board members here to be sworn in this evening, please come forward.
Each of you, please, please raise your right hand. Do each solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the City of Nashville according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire, so help you God. Congratulations.
Third reading of Resolution R. 18102, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners and UFPO local 645 Professional Employees of the Nashville Police Department from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2022, and authorizing related transfers.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move to amend R. 18102 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments made by the Budget Review Committee by roll call.
Motion is to amend. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Jettie.
Can you hear the summary of what the amendments are?
Attorney Bolton.
Yeah, memo was prepared by Dorothy Clark, Deputy Corporation Counsel of my office, a few weeks ago. Essentially, it was, as the police chief described, in further negotiations, there was the trade-off of the, an earlier position regarding sick leave buyouts in return for higher wages, the 3% per year from years two through four in the contract. Initially, there was, it was going for a fifth year also at 3%. That change was also made, reducing it back to four years. So, those changes were what the amendments were in the Budget Committee of a week ago.
Anyone else? Motion by Alderman Clemmons was to amend R. 18102 in its entirety by replacing it with the proposed amendments made by the Budget Review Committee. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malizigoya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 A's, zero N's.
That motion carries. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move for final passage of R. 18102 as amended by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 18102 as amended. Discussion on that motion. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malizigoya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 A's, zero N's.
And that motion carries. Motion R. 18102 duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of Resolution R. 19186, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,495,000 for various improvements at the solid waste department, Four Hills landfill, and the purchase of two refuge trucks.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for a final passage of R. 19186 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19186. Discussion on that motion. Say none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malizigoya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 A's, zero N's.
That motion carries. Resolution 19186 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 19187, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $6 million for the designing and construction of a Division of Public Works office facility.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 19187 by roll call.
The motion is for final passage of R. 19187. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Tenza, and then Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, and I appreciate the comments that were made at the public hearing, comments that were made here tonight about the bond. One of the things I think that the city, the public needs to remember, has been brought up a number of times in other hearings, is that part of this bond is going to utilize the money from the Brookstreet property, which makes it somewhat time-sensitive. I appreciate Commissioner Pappas and the comment she had made about the other employees, but I don't think by passing this bond tonight, we're necessarily foreclosing on correcting other issues or going forward with other projects in the future.
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner Pappas's comments, and I, I've been the liaison to the Board of Public Works, so I've heard the, the discussion. And from, from the time that I was elected two years ago, I was taking on a tour of the Public Works facilities, and I saw that the, that the buildings are in, in, in poor shape, as been, as has been described many times. And I agree with Commissioner Pappas that the ideal solution would be to, to fix everything, where, you know, we're taking, you know, a step. I was concerned, since I'm the Ward 5 alderman, I was concerned about this plan to consolidate everything at the landfill, because I was concerned about how that would affect the neighborhood and, and the neighbors. But, you know, frankly, not many people have, have said anything. In fact, just the opposite. Some of the people in the neighborhood say that they're not opposed to this, this project. And so, you know, we gave, we gave them, thanks to, to the board, and largely thanks to whoever controls snow, which caused a, a delay in the public hearing so that the informational meeting could occur prior to the public hearing. And so, people have had an opportunity to, to hear about this and to ask questions, and, you know, presentation was made available online, and evidently, people are not opposed to it. At least, they haven't expressed any opposition. So, the, the idea of, of moving the administrative building, building this new building, I think is a necessary is a necessary project, but I think it's only part of the solution. I think that the long-range plan, as the Director and Commissioner Tease said during the public hearing, the long-range plan is to move the garage that is currently located on Stadium Drive and the garages that house the park recreation vehicles to the landfill site. And I think they would do it now, but it's a much more expensive project. And I think the Board of Public Works recognized that the city just cannot afford to do that right now. And so it's going to be a, you know, this is the first step in that. So, you know, so I support this. And, you know, the alternative would be, you know, much, much too expensive, I feel. I mean, I wish, if we had the money, I think, I think that's what we would want to do, but we, you know, we've heard the mayor talk about the healthcare costs and other pressures on the budget. So I think that this is the most that we can do at the, at the current time. And I think it's very much needed, and so I will, I will support this and vote for it.
Further discussion. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just want to say this isn't a long overdue investment. I mean, the city will become a disaster in two weeks if we don't have garbage pickup. If we don't have clean water, like, our roads plowed. Public Works does a lot of work, they don't always get a lot of thanks for it. I mean, sometimes people are focused on what's going on at the end of their driveway, and they don't really have the whole city, you know, perspective in mind. And I think the administrative staff, administrative staff that oversees all of that activity and helps organize it, does a very good job overall for the amount of work that they do compared to their size. So I just think this is a long overdue investment. And as Alderman Jettie pointed out, and Alderman Tenza, doesn't, it certainly doesn't foreclose us on pursuing additional needs. And this is an incremental approach, we have the opportunity to do it, and it makes sense to do it now.
Further discussion. Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19187 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malize Goya.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 19187 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 19191, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $118 million to fund the design and construction of a new middle school and renovations and expansion of the existing two middle schools, Penachuck and Fairgrounds, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 19191 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I am very pleased to support this this evening. And the reason being is that this is actually the, we have to recognize the fact that, and as was previously explained in public comment, that Elm Street is no longer a viable option for us. We did the studies, it's actually going to cost more if we were to renovate Elm Street. So, you know, some of the comments that I've heard, I just wanted to kind of address. There have been studies that have been done with the population, that was explained at the Budget Committee. Each one of these schools, after the renovation, the new one and the two existing middle schools, Penachuck and Fairgrounds, are going to have relatively equal population. Right now, it's imbalanced because I think Elm Street is the larger one, so that population is going to shift a little bit to the other two schools. And then, the other thing that I had asked the city treasurer to provide and was included with the agenda this evening, was the amount of bond debt service that the city has projected in the next few years. And this, it's actually going down. So even with all of the bonding that we're doing this evening, or that is proposed to be done and has been done, the debt service is actually going down. Goes up a little bit by like a thousand, $2,000 bucks, I think, next year. And then the year after that, it's down $2 million, it's down $1.5 million, $530,000. And you can see these trends all the way through to the year, we have it projected out to 2041, of paying less money per year than we are paying now in overall bond debt. And the reason we're able to accomplish this is because the high schools are being paid off faster now that they're coming to the end of their, their years. It's like any other loan, you pay less in the beginning, more at the end. The high schools are at the end, we're paying a lot more towards them. And we have very good, a very good treasurer, he knows how to, first of all, float these bonds in a way that they are at the least cost to the taxpayer. We have a triple A bond rating in Nashua. And in addition to all of that, you have to remember that the city anticipates some of these costs. I don't think that anybody didn't know five or 10 years ago that something was going to have to be done with Elm Street. And so, you know, the question is absolutely timing. That was mentioned this evening, and timing is absolutely right. And the time to do this is right now, because for the very reason that our bond debt service is going down to a point where we can let a bond, that will allow us to do a big project like this. And it won't cost anything extra to the taxpayer. That's, that's, that's the point. So I think this has been planned out from a financial perspective, it's been planned out from a, you know, from a strategy perspective as far as what the student population is going to be. And quite frankly, that spot has been called for a school for a very long time, since that development was created back in 1999. So with all of that said, I think this is the right move for Nashua, and I'm happy to support it for all of those reasons.
Alderwoman Malize Goya.
Yes. I would agree with Alderman Clemmons. And from 2004, when Alderman Clemmons' father and I ran the school board together, we were discussing Elm Street and portables, and space that was not conducive to the type of educational programming our students needed. And so I think this is the time, and we need to do it across all of the middle schools so everyone has an environment that supports the learning. And if, if members of the public have gone back and looked at all of the presentations made around this project, there's certainly a lot about the structure and the land, but underlying everything that's being addressed here is what is the educational opportunity going to be like? And kids aren't sitting in desks anymore, we're looking at opportunities for students to work in groups and interact in different ways than probably the ways we were all encouraged to interact in middle school. So it's great, and I'm sure Alderman Clemmons' father is thrilled to know we're getting rid of portables and we're upgrading structures for teachers and students. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie, I'll go around this way.
So I was on the Joint Special School Building Committee, and we, you know, we heard, and this, the presentation that was made by the architects and the construction manager was all, it was available to all of you and the public as well. But, you know, it, you know, they made a compelling argument that, well, I think everybody acknowledged that Elm Street needed help, and as has been pointed out, the, Penachuck has those portables that are not appropriate. So there's no question that we have to do something. And they, they looked at the cost of renovating Elm Street and determined that it would cost more to do that. And after we were done, we would still have a school that was originally built in the 30s, and we wouldn't have any playing fields, and it just would not be an ideal situation. So we can build a new school up to the standards of today with playing fields, and so that all three schools will be, you know, somewhat equitable for less money than it would cost to try to renovate Elm Street. So I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I think the people who spoke asked some legitimate questions about the cost and what was, how it was going to affect them. And, you know, Alderman Clemmons explained very well that, that, you know, we, you know, the committee asked Treasurer Fredette to answer those questions. So he did come up with an analysis that Alderman Clemmons has explained. The question he did not answer was, you know, how will this affect someone who owns a $300,000 house? That was a question that came up several times. I was out of town, so I couldn't get back to Treasurer Fredette to ask him. So I did my own calculation. This may be completely wrong, but, but I think it's, I think it's fairly accurate. The, you know, the, given the cost that Treasurer Fredette told us it would cost us each year for this bond, if you divide that by the equalized, excuse me, the valuation of all the property in town, I calculated that for a $300,000 house, depending on, you know, as Treasurer Fredette explained, it depends on the interest rate. His analysis that was included in the, in the resolution that we received started out at an interest rate of 3.5%, but the last time we issued a bond, it was at 2.2%, I believe. And the, you know, financial people that I know say that, that the, the rates for municipal bonds are at all time, at historic lows. Nashua's bonds are extremely attractive. So the chances are, when this, when these bonds are sold, they're probably going to be a lot less than the 3.5, probably going to be closer to the 2.2. But if it's anything under 3%, my calculation says that if you own a $300,000 house, a $300,000 house, that, you know, your share of this each year is going to be less than $200. And, and that, you know, as Alderman Clemmons explained, because of the way we manage our bonds, it's really not going to cause an increase in tax rate. But, you know, to be fair, if we, if we paid off the current high school bonds and we didn't borrow this additional money, that, you know, the tax burden would go down. So it's not going to go up, but, you know, assuming we didn't bond something else, like the Public Works Garage, so the chances of that happening are pretty slim. But for people who ask the question, what is my share, if I own a $300,000 house, what is my share of this going to be? It's going to be less than $200. So, so I think that, I hope that answers their questions and allays their fears, but I support this.
Alderman Lopez.
I just want to speak to Elm Street. It's, the neighborhoods around it have outgrown it, and there's a lot of encroachment on people who are living there versus the teachers that are working there. I frequently field questions, you know, from landlords in the area, is there more parking available? Can, where can we put the entry parking? I mean, nowhere, we can't just produce surface area. So it's getting very crowded in that area, it is a traffic problem. One of the most common issues that we hear are people coming in and out of that street around school hours, either a danger to the kids that are crossing the street and walking to and from their homes, or they're full of kids and their parents picking them up. And then there's the whole, like, unsolvable issue of, for some reason, kids are just drawn like magnets across Main Street to that Burger King. So I think it was sooner or later going to have to just, from a neighborhood perspective, be addressed. Looking at the building structure and the building design, every year when we have the Veterans Day Parade or the Memorial Day Parade, I have lunch with the veterans right after, and by the way, all of you were invited to that. But every year, they walk in, they're like, I went to school here, it hasn't changed a bit. And like, very nostalgic, but like, they went to school there a while ago. So I think that building really has outlived its usefulness. It's definitely done a great amount of service to Nashua, but we need to start thinking about how we can best have our students move forward with more modern education realities. One of those realities is security. We need to update and upgrade the way we approach security in a way that we can train for practical management in an emergency situation without terrifying kids when we have to teach them what to do in an emergency. And that's part of what's going into this building as well. We have to address new realities with more and more kids presenting behavioral exceptions and different learning needs. We need to acknowledge that, and we need to start making sure that our kids that are growing up here in Nashua have the same opportunities to succeed in education with the supports that they need. So I think the, the planning that has been done laboriously with Alderman Dowd, under Alderman Dowd's leadership, has been very extensive, it's been public knowledge, it's been engaging. I do agree with Alderman Jettie that a lot of very good questions were asked at the public comment, but I think at the end of the day, as Alderman, we were elected to address this issue, so I support it as well.
Alderman Cle.
Yes, thank you. I know there was a comment about our homework hadn't been done. I'm on, like Alderman Jettie and, excuse me, Alderwoman Malize Goya, yourself, President Wilshire, and Alderman Dowd, on this committee, and there's been a lot of homework that's been done. And actually, this is the result of all the homework that is sitting, that is sitting on the website, that any person can get to. This has been talked about since I became Alderman two years ago. It's a need, I think, that everyone really did their homework, asked the appropriate questions in the committees. We went through all of the contracts, who would be the best person for architect, who would be the best person for contractor, we listened to their ideas. We listened to whether or not it was good to keep Elm Street. I also want to address the fact that this is not a junior high, it's a middle school. And as such, we have three middle schools. This project will equalize the middle schools across the city, one in the north, one in midsection, and one in the south. My hope is that, yes, it will eliminate some of the busing, and our kids won't get home at 5:30 at night, that they will be home at a decent hour, rather than being bused from Elm Street. The other issues that were, were talked about was that, the tax rate. And I appreciate Alderman Jettie's expertise, or at least a stab at it. I thank you very much for it. I know that Mr. Fredette had said that it was something that was very difficult to calculate, but that at least gives us some concrete information. And the truth is that there's never a good time to spend money. I think, as far as anybody's concerned, they'd always want their taxes to go down and never to spend money. One other question that keeps getting talked about is that we have a lower enrollment. I think with better schools, more, this is not really going to be state-of-the-art school, but a better school system, it will bring younger families in. I can tell you from my family that have looked at places to live, states to live, they look at the school systems first. So if we have a school system for middle schools, for fifth graders and so on, that is a good school. We will attract younger families here, and I think that is one of the things that we want to do. So I'm for it, I've been on it for two years, I've listened to all of it. Oftentimes, the public doesn't react until they start hearing those big Oftentimes, the public doesn't react until they start hearing those big numbers, and then they come out and they react. And I think the public has been asking some incredible questions. I think the public, especially those in the areas, have brought up some good concerns. I also think each of those concerns have been looked at. I know Alderman Dowd has worked with the architects to try to answer these people, and we've done our best, I think. Nobody's questions have been ignored, so, thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
I have somewhat familiarity with this project. It's been well over a year going through all the studies. I'm not going to reiterate anything that was said. On the bonding, I have met no less than five times with the treasurer. And there are a number of things involved in bonding. There's no set payment per year. If it looks like the bond payment for a year is going to be high and in fact the tax rate the wrong way, there are ways around that. Also, when we, there are things like, we sell bonds and we, there is so much in demand, we get a fee from some of the companies. They pay us to actually buy our bonds. I'm not exactly sure how that works, but that's what I was told. And also, we can move the payments around. And we can buy the bonds for 20 years, we can buy them for 25 years. There's many ways to manipulate that, and the idea is to keep that bonding level fairly level. So to try and impact, say what it is, on a personal home of $300,000, you can't say that. As with Treasurer Fredette this afternoon, he says, you can't possibly say that, because I can change that payment as need be. And, you know, city services could change, and that impacts probably more than this will. So, you know, and when we approve a bond, any one of these bonds, he does not go out that next day and buy a bond. He won't be buying a bond until he needs to. We have ways of covering early expenses, especially in this instance where we already have $2 million to spend. And it, so that payment is not going to really impact anybody's home as far as property taxes are concerned. It's going to stay level, just like it has for many years. The other thing is, all of the questions that were asked have either been answered or tried to be answered. That five-inch study is over a year's work by two of the best professional firms involved, and they're here tonight. Harriman is our architect and Harvey's our construction manager. And they're truly professionals and they have a ton of experience. And when they're doing the pricing analysis and they're doing the educational analysis and the design analysis, it's really outstanding. So I urge everyone to vote for this.
Further discussion?
Madam President.
Oh, Alderman Tenza.
May I just ask a question to the chairman through you regarding some of the questions with the design of the project? If the chairman could just briefly touch on whether any final decisions have been made, in particular with the issue of access to this piece of land, what the process will be like going forward to finalize the project in case anyone in the public has questions or concerns about it moving forward?
Alderman Dowd.
Not sure what the question was again.
Access in the process moving forward to finalize design for the school, location and everything.
We have said numerous, numerous times that, as we did this one-year study, we talked to many groups of people that have input into this process. That continues throughout the detailed design phase. And that's also at Fairgrounds and Penachuk, not just the new school. And whether it's teachers, school administrators, neighbors, police department, fire department, Department of Public Works, they'll all be involved in the detailed design. And all we have now, like for the new school, is conceptual design, and that could change based on all of those inputs. And the idea is to make a school that's extremely beneficial to Nashua, meets the needs of the students and the school department, and has the least impact on the neighborhood.
All said, Alderman Tenza?
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is for final passage of Resolution 19-191 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Maliza Golja.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 19-191 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R19-192, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a contract with Fuel Media Holdings for advertising services.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R19-192 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19-192. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie.
I would just like to, for people who are watching, just to explain, this is the company that sells the advertising that you see on the buses. So this is a company that we contract with, that sells that advertising and arranges to get it put on the buses, and that's what this is for.
Further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Maliza Golja.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 19-192 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R19-193, relative to the transfer of $3,250 from Department 194 contingency account number 70100 general contingency to the Nashua Airport for the purpose of funding a portion of the cost of snow removal equipment.
Alderwoman Maliza Golja.
Yes, I would move for final passage of R19-193 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Maliza Golja.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays and 0 nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 19-193 is duly adopted.
Excuse me. Second reading of Resolution R19-194, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Police Commission and the Nashua Police Supervisors Association from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023, and authorizing related transfers.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Madam President, I move for final passage of R19-194 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19-194. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Tenza.
President, I know there's been a lot of discussion about this contract, and throughout the last couple of years, we've talked about the issue with the health insurance, and I'm glad that it's being addressed. This contract, like the other contract we voted on today, I'm not sure that we should hold it up over this issue with the healthcare or future budget cycles. I think Attorney Alderman Clemens said earlier, you know, every year, there are difficulties. We need to make difficult decisions here. I don't see this contract as adding to those difficult decisions, given the bargaining unit and the amount of the contract. Deputy Chief Testaverde also talks about the difficulties in retaining people now within the police department, which is not just a problem for Nashua. I would think, given the Department of Nashua actually probably has a, does a better job of retaining, but nevertheless, it's a competitive market. I think these benefits or the costs associated with this goes towards letting the sergeants or lieutenants know that we value the work that they do and we want them to stay here in Nashua. So I'm hoping the board supports this tonight.
Alderman Lopez.
I just want to express my sympathy for Mayor Donches, for having to take the position that he's taking. I appreciate that you're doing your job and that you're looking at the whole city. I'm sure you love being Scrooge tonight and having to tell people that, you know, you don't think the money for the money that they want is there. And I know you don't necessarily want to take that position because you do appreciate fire, police. It's a tough job to be in, but, I mean, at the end of the day, so is theirs, so I think both sides have made very good points. Both sides have advocated very strongly for their constituencies, and I think as Board of Alderman, we're going to have to take a hit on this when it comes to budget season because it's going to have to come out of somewhere.
Alderman Laws.
I couldn't agree more. I think that police is certainly a division of city government that you want to be able to hire at their leisure and not out of desperation, and this is something that we're absolutely going to need to do to make it so they can staff with good officers, which we have. We can't put a feather in our cap about how great the police department is and then not support them when they're coming to us for help. So I support this.
Alderman Dowd.
I'll start off by saying I'm going to support this, but I did have an extensive conversation with the mayor, and I understand his concerns relative to these costs and health costs. And I've asked the mayor right after the first of the year to have a sit-down with the health people, the health insurance people, and give us a full explanation of what's going on and possible ways that we can mitigate some of this going forward. Also, we need to have a discussion as a full group on the budget pressures for this upcoming year and look at what we might have to do as a group going forward to ensure that the tax rate doesn't get out of hand. So I look forward to having those discussions after the new year.
Any further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
Mayor, if you're visited by three ghosts this evening, you should call the police and see what they can do.
The motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 19-194 by roll call. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Maliza Golja.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 19-194 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R19-195, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $63,790 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into Police Grant Activity Fiscal Year 2020 Violence Against Women Act, VAWA, grant program, and to authorize the transfer of matching funds.
Alderwoman Maliza Golja.
Yes. For final passage of R19-195 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 19-195. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Maliza Golja.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays, 0 nays.
That motion carries. Resolution 19-195 is duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance 19-062, prohibiting the use of tobacco products near city-owned buildings and in city parks.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd move for indefinite postponement of ordinance 19-062, and I'd like to speak to my proposal.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. First, I'd like to apologize to the two folks who worked very hard with me to build this ordinance. After speaking with members of the city departments, the police, and many folks who live in the city, I find that it is a little too broad and it is a little indistinct. And I would like to indefinitely postpone this and start again in January. My apologies. Thank you.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. I completely respect that position. And, you know, as I've said before, I'm happy to work with you, Alderman Schmidt, because I think that, you know, I think that when, if we can narrow this down to certain and particular areas, I think that we can come up with a pretty good ordinance that satisfies what we're trying to do. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
I'm obviously not a huge fan of smoking in public parks, and I pointed to the fire danger issue, but it had occurred to me, and I felt like I could probably address this if the legislation had passed, that potentially with an increase in the number of homeless encampments in the city and in those parks, this could be used as a way to move people along. So, I mean, I'm glad we're looking at it a little bit more carefully because the parks get a lot of different usage. I do think it's important to focus on making sure that, number one, we are keeping smoking away from children's play areas wherever possible, but, number two, we craft the legislation in a way that allows parks and recreation to figure out how to do that, like whether it's with signage or whatever, because some of the conversation that we had regarding this and the expense of signs was alarming. And particularly, it's important that whatever legislation we come up with is understandable as a change in policy for the City of Nashua, so that people aren't wondering which parks they can smoke in and which ones they can't. So whichever, whatever we craft, I think we need a lot of interaction with Public Works and Parks and Recreation, and I agree that we can probably work a little bit more on this.
Further discussion? Alderman Jettie.
I was so looking forward to voting for this, but I respect the reasons for withdrawing it at this time or postponing it at this time so that we end up with a better crafted law that accomplishes its purpose. I will agree with Alderman Schmidt to indefinitely postpone.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
If somebody is walking around in mind while smoking in 20 degrees of weather, our Public Health Department can probably point you towards some smoking cessation programs.
The motion before us is for indefinite postponement of ordinance 19-062. Is there further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Reluctantly, yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Maliza Golja.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
We have 15 yays, 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Ordinance 19-062 has been indefinitely postponed. Alderwoman Maliza Golja.
Yes, I would move to remove O-19-064 from the table by roll call.
Motion is to remove from the table Ordinance 19-064. Discussion on that motion? Could the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Maliza Golia.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wulcher.
Yes.
We have fifteen yes, zero noes.
And that motion carries. Alderwoman, oh. Alderwoman Maliza Golia.
I would move for final passage of O-19-064 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Ordinance 19-064. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Karen. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Maliza Golia.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Wulcher, excuse me. We have fifteen yes and zero noes.
That motion carries. Ordinance 19-064 is duly adopted. New business resolutions?
There is none.
New business ordinances?
There is none.
Period for general public comment. We have four people signed up. Tracy Pappas is not here. Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I just wanted to talk to you for a couple of minutes about some right-to-know issues. I had put in, and I'm concerned about this because of the legislation that's being proposed to charge residents for time being used by administrators when you exceed a certain amount each month. And you all know I've put in plenty of right-to-know requests. One of the right-to-know requests I put in was on August 13th and I took the specific contract language from the KRT contract and requested their returned documentation. And the city took the position that all of that language, all of those requests were going to be denied with the exception of one piece on the basis that anything that KRT returned was considered draft material. And as draft material, it wasn't available for public input now, or for public viewing. So, and that's going to be something we challenge in court soon here, I think. But, because the way the city works right now, an assessor will take a property card and go out to a home and mark it up, quote in draft form, but that is stapled to the changed card. It's in the file and the public can review that. Basically, KRT took all these forms and returned them. We didn't ask them to staple them to all of our property cards because it probably would have taken too much time. But, but the city, anyway, the city said what they said, but they said there was one thing they would deliver and it was the hearing sheets. So, and it kept getting stalled. So, I finally got, and the reason I found out about hearing sheets, I didn't know these hearing sheets existed and we met with the president of KRT, was because as I was gathering property files, record files over at City Hall, I was finding hearing sheets in the files from people who went to the second hearing. So, I requested my file and my sheet wasn't in there. And it was interesting because through a series of right-to knows and those email exchanges by the administration, they were talking about my hearing sheet. So, I wanted to see it. So, I, when I put that right-to-know out there and the city said, "We'll let you see the hearing sheets. Those will make public." Great. I specifically asked and they said, "It's going to take a little while. We need like six weeks." And I said, "Well, could I see my own hearing sheet?" And they said, "Nope. We're not going to be able to find it. You're going to have to wait." Well, it kept getting stalled and finally, the middle of December, they delivered on the first batch. And what was interesting is there was a resident who went and got their property file and found their hearing sheet and called me and said, "I found the hearing sheet." And I said, "Well, send me a copy." And this was their hearing sheet when they went to talk to KRT. And it said, "The taxpayers requesting a second review, blah, blah, blah." Well, this individual, I said, "Well, I put in a right-to-know for my hearing sheet because it wasn't in my file." And they said, before they went and found theirs, they said, "Well, can I put in a right-to-know for mine?" And I said, "Yes. Put one in. See what you get." Well, the day they got the response back from the city, they had gone to City Hall to check if there was a note in their file that they requested be in there. And that's when they called me up and said, "Hey, my hearing sheet's right in my file and here it is." And I said, "Well, that's cool. Yours happens to be there." But the city responded that day and delivered their hearing sheet and this is what they gave them. Fully redacted, completely black, claiming that all of this is confidential information and you can't see it. And the person was irate, like, "I already got a copy." So, the next day, I get the response from the city on the first batch. They send me 62 pages like this. So, obviously, the city, after four months, decided that they weren't going to allow these hearing sheets to be public documents. Hey, that's all right. The city gets to change their mind, but why would you have your staff and the legal people in the department go through and cull through pulling all these sheets? They pulled them all and now they're going to just blackout. I don't know how many there are. There could be 600, there could be 800, there could be 1,000, nobody knows. And the whole interesting part of it is I received notification that they lost mine. So, I don't even get mine. So, but this is what concerns me. Why didn't legal departments say to me, "Mrs. Ordolano, we've changed our position and we're treating this as confidential information." I have about 10 of these that I haven't defined in people's files that I printed to see how they were recorded and what was on them. And they're public in the files down in assessing that are there. But then somehow legal said, "Nope. It's not going to be information you can see." And instead of letting me know, it's saying, "Mrs. Ordolano, we changed our position. If we give this to you, it's going to be all black." I ended up after the first 62 sending an email saying, "Please stop doing this. You don't have to send me a whole bunch of black pages. You've obviously changed your mind." But I clarified and said, "Is my sheet available?" And then I received a letter back that seems to indicate, couldn't fully understand it, that there was no sheet for me. You know, this is what concerns me. I don't want to pay for this. I just feel like it's not right. And had there been open communication, it wouldn't have happened. You know, I read, I didn't go to the last Board of Assessors meeting, but I did read that the city has hired back Cornell, David Cornell, to work on a dashboard to do some development for reporting systems for the city. I think it's awesome. I think that's great. The one thing I would, you know, put out there is there is still a huge resistance on the part of the city to allow any public input or any public discussion about what's going on. We saw what happened with KRT. Kim Kleiner and the administration said that, you know, "We're going to let KRT come in and you folks in the public can talk to them and meet with them." And it got canceled and it got canceled and then the city decided they weren't going to allow that, never really telling us. It didn't happen. And then there was the policy manual and I tried to give input to the policy manual and the manual comes out and everything that I had suggested was just thrown into the trash.
Mrs. Ordolano?
And so...
Two of the speakers signed up.
Okay. So, this David Cornell coming is great, but I would like the city to think about letting the public have some input as to what this dashboard is going to look like and more importantly, what the reports are going to look like. Because I can tell you the compatibility of what I want to see in a report so it's useful to me as a member of the public, may not be what the administration is looking for. And I don't care if you say no. I'll wait till it's all done and I'll give my whole list. Just seems inefficient to do it that way. You know, I know you don't owe that to me, but I think there's a lot of lack of transparency that continues in this city and this experience was just dreadful. Thank you.
Mr. Seidel.
Carl Seidel, 39 Pilgrim Circle. Thank you for paying attention to my questions. I think that the questions came up because these are important parts. I'm glad to hear that you did pay attention to the objection, but I think you ought to come out and promote that when you publicize your response, you should have something that's available. I didn't see it at the one meeting that I went to, that there wasn't this type of information. This was their discussion on expansion because I've talked to the superintendent and he said that he had some expansion plans in the new school. Was that necessary or could that have been delayed to some other time in the future? They also have a special room that is going to be for your handicap people, I think, which you thought might return some money on your investment. Is that analyzed? Was that an accurate statement or not? I mean, that's easy to figure out whether it's going to pay back over the period of time. And the 30-year usage for that? I've seen schools with 50, 60 years they've built. Why are we only getting a 30-year? Those are questions that keep coming up, but the ones I asked were ones that I thought could be done fairly quickly and should be presented in your, whenever you're selling this capital project. I spent four years up there in Concord, or worse, terms in Public Works. When we ask these questions, this is the answers that we expected. This is the things that we looked for in analyzing any capital project. But I thank you for your response and I think you ought to put in a better audio system in this because I can't hear anything back there, what you're saying. It magnifies by almost a factor of 100 when I get up here, but I still, some of you have very low voices and I know I've interviewed you on my show and I couldn't hear you up here, even in the first row. So, I really would appreciate putting better speakers in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Remarks by members of the board? I'm going to take the first remark. I'd like to ask Alderman Gidge to come forward. Please.
This is a sacrifice?
Yeah. I'm going to offer that, young.
Alderman Gidge. Thank you for your service on the board. I would like to present you with this plaque presented to Ken Gidge, December 23rd, 2019, in grateful recognition of your service to the city. Ward 6 Alderman, 2018 to 2019. Your commitment and dedication have been greatly appreciated. Alderman Maliza Golia. Alderman Maliza Golia. December 23rd, 2019, in grateful recognition of your service to the City of Nashua, Ward 8 Alderwoman, from 2010 to 2019. Your commitment and dedication have been greatly appreciated and very much so by this speaker. Thank you very much. How that I believe Alderman Karen and Alderman Dowd will now become the longest serving Alderman. Very nice. Very nice.
Thanks for sharing.
Which one's better?
Alderman Karen has the longest city service.
Remarks by members of the board? I'm going to start over here. Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I too would like to say that I congratulate Alderwoman Maliza Golia, you know, we're good friends. We'll see you around and everything, but it has been my pleasure to serve with you on the board and we're going to definitely miss your expertise. And I would like to say to Alderman Gidge the same thing. I know this year you had a pretty tough time with your illness and I know we did practically drag you out of your deathbed on one vote. And you did come and that told me exactly your commitment to public service. I know I served with you up in Concord and here on the board. It's been good and I wish you the best as we move on. And again, another good friend and we'll be seeing you around.
Thank you.
Best wishes.
Could you go around and come back?
And come back to you, certainly. Alderman Gathright.
I just want to say the same thing. I served with you in the House and everything and you will be missed and I thank you for your wisdom. Merry. So, I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone and Happy Kwanzaa to my colleagues as well as the city.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, very quickly, I hope. Just want to wish Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everyone on the board and their entire families and a safe holiday season. Ken and Mary Ann, I've known both of you for many, many years. Ken and I go back all the way to high school.
Oh, yeah.
At least.
Forty-five years.
Yeah. So, known him a couple of days. And of course, Mary Ann, you know, I'm sure we'll be seeing you lots as we normally do. So, congratulations for all your service and Mary Ann is also on the Board of Education with me and served the city well for a number of years. The other thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank everyone for their support and the vote for the school bond. It's well appreciated by me and also, when this whole process started, it was Alderman McCarthy and myself and he was leading the charge at that time. I've taken that over for him and it's my intent to make sure that the project is finished on time, under budget, meets everybody's expectations.
Alderman Cle.
Yes, thank you. I want to echo the sentiments of that it's been great working with Alderman Gidge and Alderwoman Maliza Golia. Alderman Gidge and I do serve up in Concord and two years ago, we, a year ago, two years, he was my seatmate and I was like his wife. I nagged him constantly and probably worse than his wife was, but you'll be missed here and I'll still see you up in Concord. Alderwoman Maliza Golia, I often talk about corporate knowledge. You've been amazing to be able to learn from you and to hear from you. I really appreciate that and thank you. I also want to wish everybody Happy Holidays. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa and all the other ones that I'm forgetting. I want to echo Alderman Dowd's about the school bond. There's been a lot of hard work going and I appreciate everybody's support on that. It's also a lot of money, so I understand people's anxiety on it. And to my ward, I usually send out a weekly newsletter and for the past two weeks I have been remiss on it between the holidays, my computer not working and being a little under the weather. It's been delayed. It will go out tonight, I promise. Thank you very much.
Alderman Laws.
I just wanted to say the same thing. Ken, your passion is inspirational to me when I started on the board. I really appreciate you. Mary Ann, your guidance and wisdom has been invaluable to me and I'm going to miss both of you.
I wish everybody on the board a Happy Holidays. Have safe ones. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So, I want to start by thanking, well, announcing, I guess, that we had our Veterans Christmas over at Delana's house. It went really well. They decorated their hallways as usual with creativity and gusto. I wanted to thank Alderman Cle for supporting that project, donating Christmas trees, donating her time, being very engaging with veterans. I think sure it meant a lot to them and they appreciated having you there. Also, Alderman Jettie for helping me and Amber in that little venture to start that program. I want to thank all the Aldermen who came to the homeless memorial and especially the mayor for his comments and support with the proclamation. I know the mayor has written a proclamation for many years, but no one ever made it quite so convenient as to stick it underneath his window so that he could like definitely attend the ceremony. And I think having your presence there was very much appreciated by many people. So, I wanted to thank you for that. And then I also wanted to, very grateful today, I wanted to thank Alderman Maliza Golia, who's one of the first Aldermen that I worked with through Cultural Connections Committee. You're a great mentor. You're a great leader and I'm going to miss you on the board, but I'm sure I'll see you I'm sure I'll see you out in the community. And then Alderman Gidge, I, it was a pleasure to serve with you for a term. I appreciate your passion for arts, and I look forward to seeing you in the community as well. And Happy Holidays.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. This is the day. So Alderman Gidge, you and I started in politics together up in the State House, and all he did was pick on me because my hat was smaller than the ladies on the other side of the room. But it was...
See.
She was a Republican. She used to have big hats.
Yes, she did.
Yes, she did. It was great serving with you. We always had a good time, unlike Alderman Dowd, because he's older, so he would have known you longer in school than I did. And Alderman Malizia Golia, we've been working together since I was on Parks and Recs, when Nashua Goes Back to School started. And one of the agreements was that even though she's off of this board, she is still chairing that committee next year.
From my grave, I will be chairing.
Sometimes these things happen, right? So just a reminder, since we are going, we are on break until after the first day of the year, the public should be aware that the inauguration for the 100th and 10th ceremony is Sunday, January 5th, at noon time at Nashua High School North. Our new city clerk, Sue Lovering, has been working very diligently with the three-member committee, and we got everything just about done, just the matter of printing the program. I did remind the mayor he couldn't have more than a page for his bio, so everybody has a little piece of the action. But it's going to be a great day, so don't forget to send out your invitations, but it is open to the public. And on that note, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and please be safe, healthy, and have a great year. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the outgoing Aldermen for their time and commitment. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, and I will keep it short and just say Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Jettie.
So I too wish to, wish everyone Happy Holidays and say goodbye to Alderman Gidge and Alderwoman Malizia Golia, although I understand there are some people that are happy to see you go, so they won't have to pronounce your name anymore.
After 10 years, yes.
And I'd also like to make note that the president signed the, a $1.4 trillion budget recently. Hopefully, we'll get some of that money. But it, it also included raising the, the tobacco age to 21. So we didn't do it here, but, but they did it nationally, so beginning this summer, it'll be illegal to sell tobacco or vaping products to anyone under the age of 21.
Good. Alderwoman Malizia Golia.
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to address the, the middle school bond. I have been a member of Joint Special from the time I was on the Board of Education, so prior to the, the signing off on Nashua High School South. And I remember going through that building with Kim Shaw, who was on the board at the time, looking at blocks in the wall that weren't put in correctly and, and doing the punch list. And, and those middle schools have always been a concern, and we've gone on and done things to elementary schools, so it's nice to see we're finally coming together to address all of the middle schools in one fell swoop. It's been my pleasure to serve with all of you. Some of you I've known for a while, and, and I know you socially, and others I've gotten to know and am coming to know you socially. I appreciate all you bring to the board. I think that it's very important for the public to see us having the questions and the debate that we have here, so they know that we really are thinking about what we're doing and, and not just, oh, yes, this is what we're all going to do. So I encourage you to continue to ask questions and have debate among yourselves. And as I said to the mayor, if there's something you need me to do, if I can do it, I'm more than willing. And to my family, who has put up with over 10 years of, no, I'm sorry, I'll meet you at a restaurant, and I'll get there before you, and I'll leave before you finish your dinner, but we can talk for 20 minutes. So I, I appreciate their tolerance for that, and, and also several of the restaurant owners who allow us to eat in shifts. So that's been greatly appreciated. So I just say to all of you, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and best wishes for not only 2020, but the two years moving forward in your new term. And it's never easy, and as Alderman Clemmons said, it's never a good year, but we do figure it out. And, and I think that it's just important to come together and understand that you often have, you always have, a greater depth of knowledge. That's what you're here for, to read the documents and get the information and make the hard decisions. And I know you do that. And so it's just important that you feel secure in, in your knowledge, and you can't always share all of that, because frankly, no one wants to know the detail. That's why you ran for office and other people didn't. So I commend you, because I know it's hard work, so I wish you well. Thank you.
Alderman Tanza.
Thank you. So first, I'd just like to wish everybody Happy Holidays. I hope everyone has a great Christmas and Hanukkah and Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year. Also like to congratulate Alderman Gidge. A lot of people know Alderman Gidge as a local artist. People don't realize, though, that he was an entrepreneur here in town. He was a late-night radio host at one point.
Yes.
Did many, many, many things. He's done a lot of great things for the city, for the city of Nashua, and I know he'll continue to do so for, for many years to come. So thank you for your service on the Board of Aldermen in, up at the State House. And then to my Alderwoman, Alderwoman Malizia Golia, I think for, I speak for all of Ward 8, if I'm allowed to do that, and say that we are going to miss your advocacy here in the horseshoe, everything from the shepherding of the development, the flatley development, and how involved you've, involved you've been in that, to the sidewalk projects on East Dunstable Road and everything else that you've helped, helped the neighborhood accomplish in your service here on the board. We sincerely appreciate it. One of the things that I always look forward to are the emails you send out for all the bear sightings up in your neighborhood.
I love the animals.
And so I hope in the spring and fall, we still get those emails telling us to bring our bird feeders in and tracking all the movements of the bears up in Lancaster Heights. So congratulations and thank you for your service.
Alderman Tzatzak.
Thank you. We may have to say goodbye to Alderman Gidge, but we don't have to say goodbye to Representative Gidge, and I'm very glad for that. Maybe everybody knows a little bit more about him through being here, but maybe you don't know that he once climbed a flagpole and sat on the top. I thought, I thought that would be a good thing, just, you know, touch.
Looking at it.
I wanted to thank Mary Ann Malizia Golia for all of her help. She's been a tremendous mentor, and I have learned so much. Thank you very much. I've learned a lot from so many of you. It's been, it's been a tremendous experience. And she's right, there's a lot of minutia that we, that we have in our heads that we simply cannot bring out onto, onto the floor here without taking hours and hours and hours. But we do study, and we, we do understand the issues, and we're always available to our constituents if they need us. I wanted to thank the JSSB, the Joint Special, because I know how hard that's been. I know if we're talking about minutia, you guys are the kings of minutia. All the information is available online, as far as I know. Any questions that you have, that you need help with, if you can't find it online, reach out to someone on that committee, because they have all the knowledge. I wanted to thank Madam President. She's been awesome. She stepped up when we needed her, and she has done a terrific job. And Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy everything. Thank you very much.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I want to just say that it, it's been a real pleasure serving with Alderman Gidge. We, Alderman Gidge has been a close family friend for a very long time, and so it's, it's been great to serve in, in this capacity with one another on the same board. You serve your constituents in Ward 6, including myself, very well, and, and you'll continue to do so, I know, up in, up in the legislature. So please carry on that, that work, and I hope you're, you're running for reelection for this, for the House, if, if your health allows it. And Alderwoman Malizia Golia, I have learned a lot from you over the years. I think we've had a, a great working relationship when I was on the board previously, and then in subsequent years, when I've come back and, you know, you're, we will miss your, your advocacy on so many issues here in the board, and I hope you stay involved in Nashua. With that, I just want to wish everybody else a Happy Holidays, and may it be a prosperous and safe New Year.
I too would like to thank Alderman Gidge for his service on the board. I never knew you climbed a flagpole. And we do appreciate Alderman Gidge, the work that you will continue to do on the city's behalf up in Concord. So thank you very much for that and for your service on this board. We really appreciate you. Thank you. Alderwoman Malizia Golia, where do I start?
You're not a recipe?
I got a really good recipe. Not only will I miss you, but I will miss Bogdan and Caroline, too, because you, you just have a great family. Your service has been second to none for your constituents, and, and I know that, I know the last Ward 8 meeting I was at, how highly people spoke of the work that you've done and the advocacy on their behalf, and you'll be missed. So thank you very much for that.
Wait, what do you mean, we don't get to hang out with Bogdan? Coming with us in the divorce.
He's going to have a higher level of supervision now, so he may not be a social.
Good luck, Bogdan.
Thank you, Mary Ann. You're welcome. Alderman Gidge, you asked me to come back around to you, so you're up.
Okay. Tom Lopez, you should be commended for tonight. Thank you. As you all know, about a year ago, I got really sick. Not dying, but from back to losing eyes, et cetera. But I'm getting much better, and in the meantime, I, as this was going on, I wasn't here. And it was very obvious that when someone's missing, you've got to work a little bit longer, a little bit harder, and you guys did it seamlessly. You're elected officials, you're politicians, and politicians, we usually don't work together very well. But I think Nashua, we, we've got a lot of praise from Nashua. I think it's because of this board, not just this one, but down through the years. Larry Welshere, I want to thank you very much. You have been a good leader. I think it's very important. You are a trooper, and you're compassionate. Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Mr. O'Brien, everybody needs an O'Brien. Let's face it. I mean, you've got to have an O'Brien. You did a few things for me that you think were very little, but to me, they were very big. Thank you. To Mayor of the City of Nashua, look, he's the right person at the right time for the right reason. Your heart is with the aughts. I know that. You know there can be an aught economy. I really wish I could have been more of a part of it. Please keep it up. And by the way, about a year ago, if I was standing next to an open window, and he could have, he would have, uh, like that. It seems that when I get my mind set on something, common sense just goes away. So I apologize, and I want to thank you. And my wife, Lee, and I want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and a Happy New Year. And to all of you, thank you very, very much. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken. Committee announcements.
Yeah.
Alderman O'Brien.
No, nothing. It's, it's holiday time.
Committee announcements. None. Okay. Do I have a motion?
A motion. I thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the December 23rd, 2019, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned with Happy Holidays to all, and may we have it by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Does the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Gidge.
I'll think about it.
No, yes, yes.
Alderman Harriet Catherine.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Nay.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Woman Kelly.
Who's going to do that? Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Malizia Golia.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Not to be updone. Nay.
Alderman Welshere.
Yes.
We have 13 yays and two nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 9:35 PM. Happy New Year, I mean, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
I think we should stay.